Motion to open the meeting, sorry.
Second.
Make the motion.
Make motion in seconds, that's good.
Oh, you can't make the motion, I'm sorry, I forgot.
It's like, wait a minute. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to open the meeting and we'll do a roll call vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Kathy's not here, right? Lindsay?
Yes.
Thank you, and Jen, yes, okay. Stu, we can move on to minutes. Another nice job. I'm thinking.
My last time. Any edits? Like corrections?
I just, no, 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 I just wanted something that you've done, because I think God let you know. But for Caitlin to know, secretary, that every month we do it with the warrants in. So that's. You can just copy that from Darcy's report, that has to be in the report. It's just the warrants were read, you have to put the numbers in.
Okay, I didn't do the minutes last month.
No, 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 I'm just, that's something that.
It's advice from a former secretary.
It was just something like, I don't know, you might have passed that on to her, but everything else is just.
I did, but you have the sort of the structure.
But it's, it's.
Following yours from last month.
Yeah, exactly.
And I do cut and paste the first. First part of um. Darcy's report into there, you can see it on there where I.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, no.
No, 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 thank you.
Because in the very beginning, we didn't have to do that, and then we were told.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So I'm just passing that on, because you think, oh, yeah, the warrants are regular. Because we've signed them all, but it has to be reported here, okay? Otherwise, yes, very good, and thank you for being a secretary for these past, and thank you for taking it on. Okay, but no, very good. Explicit. Anybody else have any questions on the minutes? Alright, so do we have a motion to accept the?
To accept the minutes.
A second.
Alright. Um, Nancy?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jay?
I was absent from the meeting.
Okay, so you abstain?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob?
Abstain.
Abstain, Lee?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And me, okay. Thank you all. So Laurel, you're up. Well, I, the Bartholomew, um. Report, we're still doing okay, we haven't lost any money, um. So that's, that's a good thing, um. I will say that I received an email from um. Michelle, and it's the first time she has received a letter regarding this account. And so she asked me to come in and talk about it, you know, if I had any questions, so. We talked about it, and Kathy knew about it, it was, it was an account that was set up years and years and years ago. And all the um. Proceeds, if I wish I could remember what the name of it is, I can look it up. Anyway, the proceeds from, you know, the, the interest on this stock. It was given, dividends or the interest on the stock was given to the library, it comes quarterly. This is the first time they received a letter about this, but it's like fifty-four dollars and something cents, and it goes right into the donations account.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's always, yes, it's always here, but.
But these are hard to read.
What, again, I'm trying to figure out, putting rulers, the whole thing, but. So that was interesting for me to hear, because I said, I thought all of the money, anything involved with stocks was in with Bartholomew, and this was a separate. Part of a will from. Before we were all born, apparently, and it's, you know, gone in, and Kathy had said, you know, many years ago. Um, the then treasurer, you know, contacted her and said. Now, this is, this belongs to the library, it's just been going into the town account, find, find everything you can on this, and she did. And we were able to get, you know, some back money, but um. So that's just kind of nice, it's about fifty-four dollars, I think, it was a DT.
So like a month or two?
No, a quarter, it's, it's not big dollars, but it was kind of nice to know.
Laurel, I have a question, who owns the stock?
The life, well, we don't know, I.
It's like utilities company.
It's a, you mean, who's the, that the company is?
No. No, 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 who owns it, I mean.
The estate of this person, we don't, you know, have, I don't even know the name, Kathy couldn't remember the name, it's just been an ongoing thing for. Years, and it just goes right into donations, the only reason I was even notified about it and learned about it was that. Michelle said, and we got a letter this time, and I was kidding, she says, I've never gotten a letter, it just comes, the check comes.
Yeah.
So maybe, um, it has gone many times over, you know, different. I think, um, it's called DT Midstream. Is. And it's EQ Unified Case Number one oh four oh six four seven six six. And it goes right to um, into the treasurer's office, and it. We own sixty-six shares of DT Midstream Incorporated. Or, yeah, so it was given as a um. You know, yeah, request from somebody, but we couldn't track down exactly when it started. Um, many of the old minutes and records had been um. Done away with, with a former director we had, and I just didn't think any of that was necessary, so. Yeah, but anyway, I just, I wanted to let you know that that's the money that comes in every once in a while.
Must be a company that was started for people who wanted to change forces.
It's, no, really, truly, it's been around for a long, long time, I.
I know you didn't have your.
I know. Alright, that's my report. Any other questions of Laurel? No, I'm going to have a motion to accept the report.
Is it a written report, do we have to accept?
I don't think we have, I don't think we have to.
It's not written, I don't think we have to vote on it.
You sure?
Yeah.
We can vote on it.
We can vote on it if you want, I don't think. Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to move to accept it.
Move to accept the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Lee. Well, second, thank you, Caitlin, Nancy?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Jen, thank you, alright. And then we move on to Darcy's report.
Okay, I do also, in fact, have a report.
I'm written one.
Yeah, um, alright, so of course I included the CERC statistics, I don't have the number for US News Stream yet, but I. I'm guessing it's gonna be similar to. To May, is my guess, um, but it's still good, um, the, the CERC and renewals definitely increased, and I do think. That yes, the automatic renewals have helped with that, um, and. WIBBIE is pretty steady, uh, so any questions about the CERC? Once I have everything in August, I'm going to write out. Fiscal year totals, but I don't have, as you can see, everything yet, so, um. You will, you will see if everything laid out soon.
Well, I think it's been increasing across every month.
Yeah, a lot has been increasing.
Some of that time we couldn't, we weren't open, but.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that, that April was an outlier, um. So the standout programming, we had a Brooklyn Mafia program, twenty-eight attendees. The magic show for the summer reading kickoff for the kids, a very fun day, um.
It's good.
I know, you were laughing like crazy. She was right in front of me.
Ray and I were just kind of like, because the, um, the door was closed, of course, just because, you know, noise, and there were others. Other patrons, but we were, we were a little curious, and then, of course, I mean, Angeline was very smart and had it all. Planned out and had everybody like in a line leading up to her and getting what they needed, so. Um, but of course she had a plan for anybody who wasn't there as well, so. She, she's also on vacation next week and has it all planned out for us, so I. Oh my gosh, no, she's. I did ask her at the staff meeting, I was like, please show us step by step what we need to do. I know you gave them pro tips to not do this next week, but people will, so. Um, and then there was a Women in the CIA program at the end of the month, so that was thirty-four. I heard, I did, I heard that too, that she went very good.
Yeah.
So then we have the totals, um. And then, any questions, questions about those? Okay, uh, warrants, twenty-five forty-nine was the last bill warrant that I did, uh. The total was four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. And that was the entire total, four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Um. And then, just a fun update about summer reading, that it seems to be going very well, kids are all over the dragon. And then, um, of course, for the younger kids, she has like actual bubble wand and things like that, but, you know, those are all, like I said. Laid out, your first three squares, you get this, your next three squares, you get this, and you don't have to complete the squares in order, so. You know, she's um. Been very um. Encouraging about that, and then also. I think Sue has gotten some people who have been very reluctant to sign up for the summer reading program too, I, it's people I talked to, it was like, would you like to sign up for summer reading? And then, you know, two days later, Sue talks to them, and they sign up for summer reading, even though they told me no. Which is, which is lovely, because, you know, even if they, you know, get one bingo, or even just fill in a few squares, it's still fun, um.
I am reading things I would never have read before.
That's what the prompts are all.
I know.
Do you have a number of how many adults were?
Uh, I don't have the number, I think it is fewer than the kids, though, um.
It's a healthy number for the kids.
Yeah, the kids, the, the thing is, she keeps track on paper, and she doesn't keep track exactly how, but I have this. Ongoing list on here all the time for when people sign up for the kids' content, so. I have more access to that, um, but it is, I think, a healthy number for the adults as well, and um. People are already getting their Bingos and picking out their free arcs and um. Getting their ten raffle tickets, and hopefully they found the extra two in their packets when they signed up, because that was a special little thing that she included. So. Um, everything is, seems to be going well with that, and it's also very simplified for the, the staff this year, so. Um, you know, you, you learn as you go, so she's um, doing well with that.
Yeah, I like it better without having to paste the things in there, because they would always fall off, and.
They did.
And then you felt like, I'm cheating, because I'm picking things that I read anyway.
I know.
So getting it, it's already done, this is what you have to do.
Mm-hmm.
I kind of like that.
I know, I know I was grumbling about a view of mine, but I don't do the prizes anyways, no. Um, and then I did include something about the budget update for the very end of the fiscal year of twenty-five. Um, Ellen did reach out to me, I, and it's in. It's in the special accounts report, if you look, it's the first page, if you look at ending, um, you'll see the total is there, but. I um, was over with payroll a little bit, we've, again, that was a little bit due to understaffing, a little bit due to. My own negligence, but I have learned my lesson, I have an action plan going forward to make sure that doesn't happen again. Um, the staff are all aware of the action plan, so. So I don't anticipate this being an issue unless there's some sort of emergency where three people quit at once, and there's. But if three people quit at once, there will be money to pull from anyway, so. Um, so I just wanted to, even though it's in the report, it is there to read, I wanted to make sure I verbalize it and tell everybody that it's there. Because even though the total is at the very top, at the end. Is where it says there was some pull from, for payroll, and there will be a teensy bit more for um. The last few days of the fiscal year, which were a Friday, Saturday, and Monday, and then after that, we're in the new fiscal year. We're, we're free, so.
Was that just because like people had extra hours, or?
Yeah, some people were given extra hours for filling in, and.
That's, okay, so staff shortage.
There was a bit of a shortage.
Other people.
Uh-huh.
Pick up more hours.
Yes.
And like the change of payroll, like what people get paid, is that how it?
Yeah, I gave some people, um, also makeup hours when they, when they missed, and. I kind of learned my lesson there, as, as much of a bleeding heart as I am, we can't really afford to do that. Um, and so I, I had looked at. The budget numbers in mid-June, but, and there were. There was some in the account, but I didn't anticipate it being fully. Fully zeroed out, so. So I apologize for there being less than donations than there would be, but. And for not being able to bring it to the board in time, it was just, I had to make a snap decision to use an account, so I used donations. Um, and like I said.
I wish you had any inclination that it's possible that there was a referendum?
No, I. I did double check that.
Okay.
Yes.
I know that's happened in the past, where it just gets posted to the wrong account, somebody else's.
No, I, 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 I double checked with the, um, the variance reports, and I was like, oh, I didn't see this, I didn't see this. Um, so, like I said. I think the issue is resolved, but I wanted to be open and honest about it.
No, thank you.
Yeah. Uh. So, alright. This, uh, website. Unless anybody held, had anybody, any other questions about the budget thing? Okay, website update, it is up and running, there were a few, uh, growing pains with it, there's still a few growing pains with it. But the pertinent information is there, you know, the calendar I'm keeping updated, the museum pass page is there. Um, there are quick links right under the picture of the library on the main page.
And it's in this picture.
It's a new picture, it does not show the streaky roof that. I made sure, but even if someday we get a new picture, I have the power to change it, so that is not something.
So you do have access to the website too?
Yes, there are some very like ingrained coding things that I don't have access to, but that is something I have access to, which is more than I did before.
Good, wow, that's good then.
Yes.
So one thing about the picture of the library in the front, and I don't know if it's just me, but the. The type, you know, the name of the library looks fuzzy to me.
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of.
Shadows behind it, the letters, did.
If you look at the, if you look at the lettering, it's like. Um, built so they come out.
Right.
So I think that might be what it is.
Okay, it just kind of looks a little weird on the website.
It does make it fuzzy, um.
I have this, I have this much power, I mean, um, internet, so it's taking forever to.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah, they, they have a shadow, yeah, they have a shadow because they're built out.
Yeah, I just.
Here we go. Is this the way it looks on everybody's with the logo, like right underneath, or is that just?
This is, oh, yeah, okay.
The stuff is on like a desktop.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got it over there, that's, that's kind of weird.
Yeah, so there's that ones up here, and then ones down here. Yeah, I mean, it, it is at least optimized for mobile, which is good, it's not perfect, but it's there, and it has. Our nice coloring, our logo, and I am able to update, do library updates with, um. Important information, which, um.
But can you from home, just like say that you close for snow or something?
Yeah.
And you put that good.
Yeah, I can, I have a login where it, the login is at the very bottom of the page, as long as I use my login.
You can, that's really good, because sometimes you have to do that.
Right, yes, exactly, so, um. I, I don't have the ability to do a notification bar anymore, I don't think, but I can do the, the library updates where. So that's where I put the information about IMLS, and then there's information about the summer reading program, and. There's, somebody put this, thank you to the chair. I think they were trying to fill it in with things, because in the, uh, training one. It might have been Annie, um, in the training one, they had like fairy tale stories, so. I think they, they wanted real stuff. Um, so.
So you're overall happy with it?
I am overall happy with it, there are a few things I still want to change, but I, Annie and I are working really well with. You know, if there's anything that Revise actually has to do, she has a list going, and I asked her something yesterday, and she said, I'll contact them right away, and. You know, so we're making progress, and like I said, the pertinent information is there, thank goodness. And it only took like two days, and some weird, um. Things with different types of internet, but it was.
It was relatively smooth.
It was relatively smooth for what it could have been, um, which is, which is good, and. Uh, any other questions about that? Okay. Uh, I was asked to include the, um, original list from Steve. For the building upgrades, since that's something that is later in the agenda, so I included that, um. You know, everything with the bay windows, the kitchen window, there's an AC unit there. Or, um, I think the AC units, they flow to the back outside, that's what happens, um. It has all the roof information, um, possibly the reading garden door, it's usable. Could use it upgrade, it's not the biggest priority, but it's, it's definitely a possibility. Um, especially if we want people to be able to use the reading garden more. Um, so I know this is later in the agenda, that's my, I included it in my report. Um, and that is what I have here, does anyone have anything for me that's not here?
Well, I'll move to accept the report. Second. I don't know if we even have to do this. It was a written report.
Oh. Does somebody else have to do the move?
Yes, yes, oh. I don't know, can you?
I don't know, does it work?
Actually, just can't start the meeting by yourself.
Uh.
I'll say.
Yeah.
Alright, so Nancy?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And I accept it as well, thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Alright. It's nice to have Bob back, hi, Bob. Your picture, Bob.
It's good to be back. Almost, anyway.
Yes. Home.
Yeah, being home is most, is very important.
That's what I.
Uh, other trustees comment, I'll fill you in on what's been happening with me, if that's okay.
That's good, yeah, okay, so we talked last meeting about our building maintenance. List, and that we need to talk about Francis Sullivan, the Francis Sullivan estate that we have, so that's why I asked Darcy to. To get those, um, items, uh, back to our attention of what Steve had said were priority items. And from what I understand, um, both Steve and Arthur, right, will be coming to our next meeting. To go over more specifically about what they feel needs to be done.
They'll have a presentation.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
So we'll make sure that that's on the agenda for next month, but, um, did anybody, after hearing that report from Darcy, have other items that you feel are. You know, important to address, I, I guess what my, one question I had is, are the bay windows going to be replaced by new bay windows?
I. Would hypothesize, yes, but I'm not totally sure what they have, they're right.
No, that's fine, I just.
Yeah.
And this isn't probably a big thing, but when you said the reading, um, garden door, you know. When my grandchildren and I went out and cleaned it up that one year, all the, remember, you said rubber going on the ramp? So that it was safe for a wheelchair, that was all curling up and ripped, we got rid of it, it was safer to get rid of it than to have people trip over it.
Replace the ramp?
Either the ramp or put a covering that has a grip on it that won't peel off, it was peeled rubber mat, someone was gonna. Trip on it, not, not on a wheelchair, I mean, regular people, so that, I mean, right now, I think it's just exposed wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that.
Probably not ADA compliant.
And it's, well, I think it was when it was put in, because it had to have been.
Ripping.
Right, so that may be something, you know, the, the wood's gonna just, right, someone's gonna fall through, yeah, so something maybe. That can be done too, because you do want it to be accessible, handicapped accessible from.
Library.
The, from the library, I mean, even for a parent with a child in a stroller.
Yeah.
You know, so. No, that's a good point, I mean, just, I'm just thinking the reading garden thing, you know. Yep. Um. And the reading garden still needs a cleanup. Yeah.
That's number seven.
That's not gonna come up.
That's not gonna be done with the, the money that we have.
No, no.
One thing I was just thinking, I just wanted to throw it out there, and just food for thought, um. I feel kind of that it might be wise if there's some way that we can invest like ten percent of that money for future needs. But I don't know how the town would feel or feel about that, rather than just, I think we will spend the whole thing just on this budget.
I think it's smart to keep some in the account, to have it build up money, just in case we need it.
It is earning money right now, you know, um, so, I mean, it would be probably setting up a priority, getting prices.
Where is it earning money from?
It's in the town coffers, Bartholomew, yeah, so it's in.
It's in Bartholomew, or it's in their Bartholomew?
It's in their Bartholomew, you know, like it's a separate line item, so actually it's.
So actually, it's probably earning more than if we had it in our Bartholomew, because it's bigger.
Yeah.
Cash, you know, big, bigger account.
And that would likely be select or.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to throw it out there that maybe we could think about whether whether the, how the board feels about that. I'm just thinking, if we ever, if we ever are able to put on an addition or something with the library to expand it. We might have a little bit of seed money.
Yeah.
It's smart.
So, I'm gonna, I don't wanna sound ignorant here, but the th- the three times that we talked about this, I've heard three different amounts. Does anybody know what the, what the amount is?
To be exact, the exact amount right now?
Not to the penny, but is it, is it, I've heard six hundred, I've heard three hundred, I've heard twenty five, two hundred fifty, I don't, what, do you know? Anybody know what it is?
Yeah, I thought it was almo- almost five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like four fifty or something like that, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know.
Same was in the notes from last.
Right, but that was my speculation. I thought it was around five hundred thousand.
So, I think that can be between now and then, but.
If it's line item, wouldn't we be able to see it on some spreadsheet somewhere?
Well, I could ju-.
The reason I ask that is, is um, so maybe we could go to the the board selectman, whoever we need to talk to about it and ask if we could put ten percent of that aside for future needs. Maybe if we get a window that's, it's broken or something, no.
That's right, yeah. I don't see why not, I don't think we have to spend it down, I mean.
That depends on what the terms were.
Well, and that's the other thing, we need to know. Have eyeballs on the exact thing, what does it say? Maybe it says it it can't be replacement, only repair, I I we don't know, we've never had our eyes on the document.
So we need that document in front of them.
I mean, not that, so it, it's, the money has been bequeathed to the town, from my understanding. For the use of the library.
Right.
So.
But usually there's more terms to it than just that simple statement.
Exactly, exactly.
Feel like it's building maintenance and repair, but I could be wrong.
So is maintenance repair also replacement?
What you're replacing.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe like, say, the ramp might not be included, because it's not technically part of the building.
Right.
But maybe it would, we have to look.
Exactly, or even repair or maintenance, so to maintain the window, you could just put a broken window, you just put a new panel of we- of pane of glass in. Or can you replace it?
I do believe Steve has been talking about a replacement.
But does the document say that?
Were you with um Michelle?
When?
Remember, that you're the one that had told us about this request.
Yes.
So it's like, you were never given a copy of the document?
No, no.
You wanted to ask for it?
I mean, I I will, like, now that I know we're going to be meeting and all this, I, yeah. Um, I will get that information for our next meeting, that this is how much it is, I mean, it might have, might be more, but.
Right.
And then, you know, like we said last meeting, after we hear about this, then maybe have them come in too. Or maybe we have to go through the selectmen, I don't know. Or do we go through Rebecca and then through this, she goes through the selectmen saying, this is what, you know, we'd um we'd like this money to be spent on or whatever, I I'm not sure, I don't know how it's done.
If you can get that information, then I'll make sure that they're on the agenda, and I can also maybe ask for.
Well, I wouldn't put them on the. They are?
Yeah.
Rebecca and.
Arthur and Steve.
No, I thought you meant.
I'll double check with them, I make sure they're good with the time and dates and make sure all ahead of time.
Right, because we'd originally said having Rebecca and
Right.
Uh, Michelle coming to a meeting, and I still haven't heard back on them, but.
And she said she deferred to Steve.
Okay, so it sounds like. Building, but I do think we need to talk with Rebecca about the the actual document.
The document, and Michelle might have it, yeah, probably has it there, and I could just ask her for a copy of it or because it it really should be something that, you know, is a shared document, I would think.
Right, right, that'd be great, if you, if you can do that, and I'll talk to Rebecca about it too, as far as just if she plans to come as well, or, you know, whatever. Anybody else have any other, I mean, if if anybody else thinks of a building issue, just, you know, email Darcy or email me.
Electrical panel, but they're, they have that on the, their.
Hopefully that's on their capital.
Yeah, that should be.
I have, yeah, they'll be.
And that's the other thing, are any of these things in the capital um plan?
Yeah, some of it's gonna be a mixture, especially the roof.
Roof will wipe the whole thing.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, it's gonna be a mixture, they had already had the roof on the capital plan before the Francis Sullivan estate even contacted.
Right. So this would be helping that out?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other thoughts about that? And just keep it in mind when you go to the library, ooh, this looks bad.
It's gonna get that.
I mean, I'd rather have everything on a list.
Yeah.
You know, and then to to all of a sudden realize, I mean, there's nothing on this list about the furnace, I have no idea how old the furnace is.
Yeah, Stephen mentioned that the furnace was also a, a company that is now out of business because they were not a good company, so uh, but it, he said it should be good for a few years, but he didn't say it was a priority or anything.
Isn't that the thing that happened with the leaking?
That was because of a setting.
Oh, furnace. Okay.
That was not because of the furnace itself.
Power too, right? Yeah, you didn't have any.
Yeah, so we didn't have heat and the, the pumps on the furnace were supposed to still be going. But for some reason, they were turned off, and that was the setting, um. And Steve's not sure why they were turned off, but once those were turned on and once he double checked to make sure any other sections were in danger, he took care of it, um. So, as long as the pumps are going, that's fine, um. But yeah, I mean, obviously the furnace is at some point gonna be an issue as well, I'm just gonna write it down.
Okay.
Question mark, because I know he wrote something and I'll, I'll look back at my emails, because I know he mentioned it. Or I emailed him about it.
Okay. So, the butterfly garden update.
Um, so I wanna know what a butterfly garden.
So, yeah. I'm just gonna go back in time a little.
It's a story.
Yeah, and and very briefly, I was looking at the select board agenda for, not this Monday, but previous Monday, and saw that it said butterfly garden for the library on the agenda. So I'm like, what? Alright, I didn't know anything about it, so I asked Darcy, anyways. It could come to find out, Evangeline had asked, I think, I believe the garden club, just in passing. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a butterfly garden at the library, and they kinda jumped on it, and before we knew it, the project didn't have wings, but it was flying. Anyway, um, long story short, I I just went to the select board meeting and just asked them if they could table it until the board could talk about it. And they were fine with that. So, um, in the meantime, I got more information from Evangeline. And she would like to have a butterfly garden in the front of the library, a small one. Um, mainly for the kids and for her nature group. And um, the, the garden club has offered to help dig it up. And they have purchased some plants for it, but they're not going to do maintenance.
That's the shit, right, because they've already planted that front, that bay window, they don't maintain that.
But that is, that's part of what I wanna bring up, so.
I'm like, can't ask the librarians to do this, and
No, no.
And you've been doing a lot of it.
Well, I haven't done that garden.
But, but um, yeah.
So anyways, the location was one of the things that we wanted to talk about, and um I kinda was thinking and talking to Steve and everything, their concern, the biggest concern of the town is mowing. Making sure it's not in a spot where it's gonna be really difficult for them to mow around. So we looked at it, and number one, a pollinator, whatever that garden is, needs serious help.
Yes.
Right. If we could fix that up and expand it out, it would be not a problem for them to mow around.
Right.
So that was the idea that I had, I know that um, I feel the biggest maintenance is gonna be spring and fall, and keeping it wet at first, when you first put the plants in. Which is another reason why I would prefer, if we put it in, to do it a little closer to September than right now. Because we're gonna be going crazy trying to water it, yeah.
And you, I mean.
But that's kind of where.
So they won't come and do the maintenance like.
They're not going to commit to doing the maintenance, um. Evangeline's nature's club said that they would, she would have them help once a month.
And how old are the?
They're grade school, aren't they?
Grade school age.
They're not preschool.
No, no.
Okay.
Evangeline and I are also willing to help maintain and butter and stuff.
And then what was it? And there's some junior, um, junior gardeners on the whole garden club that might be interested as well.
Is there some way to get maybe the friends to coordinate that?
I don't know.
And I, I would think that, it it, to me, it seems like it should be more than just a fundraising group, they should be willing, it would seem that they could step up to something like that, and have a, a garden group of the friends, you know, kinda thing. Because it, because if we, if we, if we get the, the reading guarding up, just not when we do this, when we do other kinds of plantings. It seems like there should be an orga- a group that's gonna be, I mean, kids are nice and it's good to get them involved. But you can't count on them to do it on a regular basis, but if you had an organization that did it, it seems like it'd make more sense.
I don't know if the friends have the capacity to do it.
Do you know what kind of membership they have?
I mean, decent membership, but I do think if you're comparing them to the Friends of the C O A. It's not, they, they have, they orga- they operate their groups very differently. It's, they, they meet more sporadically when there is a funding need, usually, or if they are putting together a book sale or something, um. So I think that their main community project for a while was putting together um, little free libraries, and that's what it was. Um, at this point, I don't know where they are, and I know that they're planning to do a little bit of a a snack fundraiser next Monday for the concert, but, um. But right now, yeah, they're just.
I mean, they haven't even done like the, the old fashioned, you know, mailing out, we, you know, become a friend of the library.
Yeah, there isn't really an annual appeal or.
There might be some people that are members of the Friends who might be interested in helping with this project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rather than just the, the whole group.
Yeah, I think if we can bring Dale in to, to kind of like.
Because Dale's a gardener.
Yeah, she would at least know.
Yeah.
How to.
Or somebody who might be interested.
It could just be.
Maybe between them and.
Patron.
But I think there's value in asking the friends to.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, and I think, I mean, I just mean Dale as a resource to read.
Reach out to.
I think Liz is the one who has the whole membership list as the secretary, but, um. At least, she's the president, she'll know.
Because it seems to me that if, if you, if you could convince the friends to make this kind of a subcommittee. We would be able to not have to worry about next year, the year after, it'd be something that would be like a ten, they, they'd be this group, yeah.
I can definitely try.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a bad idea, and I have been kind of hoping they that they can develop the capacity for doing a few more activities.
Yeah.
That, that's my concern too, is that it's great to put things in, and I, I've said this, I'm active with the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts in town. The Eagle Projects, it's wonderful that they do these things, but nobody maintains it afterwards, so they clear the trails, or they build a garden. Who comes and cleans it, who, it needs to.
Yeah.
You need to have a group that comes and maintains.
Have some people that are willing to work on it.
Okay, because that's, you know, that, that's, that was my concern, and I, I could have heard a little about it, you know, at the um meeting, the, yeah. Selectmen's meeting, and I'm like.
Yeah.
Really do need to clean up the garden that's already there.
Yeah, and I will say.
Expand that a little bit, make it, I, I think it would enhance the library.
Yeah, there could be other people in town, if we put out like via the website, it has those little things, and like blast it out, like, we're looking to revamp the gardens, we really need some like green thoughtless to come and help. There are people in town who are very passionate about that.
Yeah.
They just did it at the school, they took the old school garden that was all broken down and dilapidated, and I could think of four people who just made it their cause, like, this is where I'm gonna donate my time, and when they're organizing the whole thing, setting up schedules for summer watering. So, I'm sure they're not to tap those same people, but.
People like it, they find it relaxing, a lot of people find it relaxing.
Even like a quick like, how you sign up for events at the library, like, do you wanna sign up to be on this garden committee, like, taking care of this, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say, I think it's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's doable, we can.
Have DigSafe out, make sure we dig.
Yeah, make sure that our, the idea that we have developed is actually something that can be done.
So, that, I mean, so they're going to ta- it was tabled, is it going to come up again?
It would have to be put back on the. Because they get the ultimate approval, because it's.
Right, right, so I mean, that would be, my only concern is that if they can ensure maintenance and if, or, you know, not that they can, but can we get there? And I, you know, again, I don't think it's fair to ask, you said you're willing to do it in Evangel, and this is one of her projects. But you can't ask the librarians like this, and besides your regular job, you've gotta water everything, you know, like especially with the heat we've had, those, some of those things have to be waters like twice a day when you first plant.
Well, that's why.
And you, they don't have holes out there.
That's the prob- biggest problem, that's why I think it's foolish to try to put it in, you know, in July, it's foolish.
Yeah.
Um, but, but putting it in closer to the fall. You know, it will still give the, because it's mainly native plants, you know what I mean, and it is for education for the kids, but that will give it a much better chance of getting those roots anchored in.
And now is the garden club paying for these, or?
The garden club has already purchased some of the plant.
So, yes, it's their baby, they're not asking.
They're at Tony's house, she's maintaining them.
But they're not asking the library to pay for them.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, or the town, no, this is a garden club project, okay. And you know, another thing too, like, we have those little islands around town that maintained by, you know, such and such a co- maybe. There's such and such a company that hasn't been tapped yet.
Right, that's true.
A new, whatever, I don't know what's.
But I don't know, I mean, that's a bigger, well, this is gonna be a bigger responsibility than those things, because you will have the back garden, we'll have a front garden.
Oh, well, we don't have to, I mean, just for one.
But I think this one is a little different than, you know, like a daunting island or something.
Right, because it's a native, yeah, right.
Yeah.
And you want them, like, just maintain it, that's all we want to, they're coming and we even water.
Yeah, so I'll definitely get into contact with Dale, and once we have more of a plan in place, I like the idea about putting out the word to patrons and having a sign up. Um, so I, I agree with that.
Good.
Down, and.
Well, thank you for going to the meeting and seeing that on the agenda, because it would have gone.
Yeah. Yeah, I will.
I think good on Evangeline for for protecting them.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
Yeah.
I I think that it could really um take care of two things at the same time. Revamping that front area, which really needs serious help.
Yeah.
And then enhancing it for educational purposes. And also, it'll be interesting for all the patrons, not just the. So do do you want me to get it on the select board agenda for approval?
Sure.
Yeah, if we're ready for that, then.
Ready for that, we need to go make sure that that everybody has aired every concern they have.
Zoomers up.
Anybody on Zoom have any concerns, questions?
Input.
When he says.
You okay about it?
Should we take a vote?
How many else is talking?
Do we skip over trustees' comments?
No, we're not very, it's a longer agenda than.
I think, I don't think we need to vote on it because it's already been proposed to the selectmen.
Okay, well.
I mean, throwing support behind in a vote is.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Just because it gives me more credence going to relax.
It's not just you coming and saying.
Right, exactly.
So I make, I make a motion that Jan put it on the agenda to go ahead with.
With the board of selectmen.
With the board of selectmen, yes, sorry, um, to uh go ahead with the butterfly garden. As proposed by the Golden Garden Club.
Heard.
That good?
That sounds good.
And.
And Evangeline, yeah, yes.
Cuz it's really her baby.
Yeah.
It's her baby.
It really is.
I'll second that motion.
All right, great. Nancy?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yep.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Thank you and Jan. Great, thank you all.
Uh, to annual budgets.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to bring this up for all of us, so it it would help me and I think would help us all if we kinda keep a running list of projects that we mentioned during trustees' con- comments. And I would like to start that because it's easy to just, we talk about, oh, yeah, we ought to do this.
Do this and then.
And then, you know, we forget about it. But um one of the things that I have, a couple of things I have on this list so far, was brought up last week. Um, Kathy brought it up, this sign. And um, actually, it's been on the list for a while, and the bush under the sign. So I just wanted to report to everyone that um, they did take the bush down. And Steve has scraped the posts of the sign. And as soon as he has a dry day, which isn't gonna be tomorrow, he's gonna paint it as the proof of it.
Okay.
So that should be.
That'd be good.
Done pretty soon.
Okay.
And then he power washed it. The sign looks a hundred percent better when you drive by. It's actually, you see it's blue. But um, I wanted to just bring that up, that that that's a step in the right direction. But we have other things we talked about before. And if anybody can remember some of them, I'd just like to get them on a list of um projects that we've mentioned, that wouldn't it be good if we did this or that? And if anybody, I know the bittersweet is another one.
Yes.
Clean half is all that.
Around the ship.
And a reading garden.
The reading garden, yeah.
Yes. Wasn't there something last week, last month about the tree? Is that the same, the bittersweet?
Yeah.
There's bittersweet everywhere.
It's literally.
It was in there with the day lilies in the front and it's around the tree in the back.
Yeah, Anthony pulled it.
He pulled a lot out of that.
It was.
I I was gonna say, it looked like someone was in there.
Yeah.
It was a lot cleaner than.
Yeah, he came up to walk, he walked away with Dan and Anthony was like, oh.
I just bent it over.
And he had somebody else who worked with him as well.
But I came the next day and it's like, oh, somebody pulled some of it out. That's good. Some other things maybe to get updates on, it's like the Gopto collection.
Yes.
You know, maybe for another meeting. I know that was on the list.
Yes, that has been at a standstill.
Yeah, so it's good to get an update.
So.
Want to find out if there's anything we can do to help. And and the other thing, Kathy mentioned the cleaning the portrait last time.
Oh, the one.
Did.
Yeah.
Oh, the Parker one?
Yeah, I have to.
Cleaning?
Yeah, but she's not here tonight, so I'll ask her more about that. But I'd like to keep a running list of the projects and then maybe we can just touch base at our meetings at the progress. We can try to.
Ryan Rudinism, whatever happened with that?
What's wrong?
It's spent. I mean, the money's.
Okay, all right, all right. Just double checking.
Well, that's how we did the sink and everything.
Oh, okay.
And I was like.
And that was, that was the end of, okay.
Um, but if, I mean, I'm I'm willing to put together a I mean, I I use Google Calendar for everything, but I'm willing to put together a trustee's, but I mean, I'm not a trustee, obviously, but one where all the trustees can have access and it can go to everybody and you can look at it and be in the know about what's coming up. I know not everybody would automatically know how to look at it, but I can show you, Matt can show you. It it might be good for.
So you mean like so for discussion? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like.
September, we'll discuss this. October, we'll.
Yeah, cuz I know we had also talked, like, the contract should be on the list.
Right, right.
And.
Yeah, this was.
Budget.
It's really important because all of a sudden it's.
Evaluation.
Against staff gifts.
Yeah, staff gifts, yes.
Yes, all of all of that, like a list and then.
Darcy's evaluation.
Yeah, and I mean, it's it's very easy to make a calendar and invite everybody, even just to be an editor.
Bartholomew, having them come.
Yes, Bartholomew.
What month do you usually do that?
They've been coming twice a year. They pretty much contact us, so I don't remember when they were here last.
But that's something else.
Yeah, I mean, just just so that we can, I mean, I could look back in the minutes when they came to, we'll all be in there.
Last time they were here was in November.
Oh, okay. They haven't come to you since then. Wow. Very good.
Well, we could just, even if we didn't um, we could just print one out for next meeting too.
Yeah.
And send it out by by email and then put it on the docs.
Yeah.
But I think even for my my own disremembering, I just don't wanna be, oh, yeah.
Well, I think.
Darcy's evaluation, we're supposed to do that three months.
I think at one point we did have a list and then it just kinda went, but.
Yeah.
And we also had like updates on, remember doing all the reviews of the policies? Yeah, every month we did a policy and we looked through it. I mean, if there are any.
We do have one for next month, right?
There is one for next month.
Right, uh, so yeah, just updating.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. Bylaws should be, I think it's, is it every three or five years? I should know.
Haven't done.
Yeah, but I'm saying that can be there, like, okay, bylaws are good, like every, whenever it is, at such and such.
Sure.
You know, and we have it in our bylaws to be reviewed.
Right.
Every so many years.
So why don't, why don't I put up a draft? I'll start with Darcy and do it. And if you think of something, just email me and I'll just try to make it as.
No, that's that's a really good idea. And then, you know, if we don't address it that particular month or that, whatever, at least it's, it's. Yeah, remember this.
It can end up forgetting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great idea.
All right. So trustees' comments.
Okay, Bob, Bob, you're up.
I I I missed it before. Before I stopped, I asked Caitlin just to put in the minutes, Bob Downey updates the trustees on his medical condition. I I don't wanna get into gory detail online. Ba- basically, uh, on uh, May twenty-third, I went into Tufts Medical Center for a lower back operation. And the type of operation was called a lamectomy. And I know all this stuff is gonna be, they do to everyone, but the lamectomy of all things will uh relates to the fact that in this spinal, lo- lower spinal uh column, there's a tissue called lamnia. And when the lamnia behaves itself, everything is fine, but it can outgrow its bounds and also cause spurs. Uh, when that happens, it presses into the nerve and causes, can cause, will cause pain and also ner- uh muscle damage. So going into the surgery, I was warned uh that I was gonna experience pain. And through the whole process, there was absolutely no pain. However, uh, apparently prior month, the month and a half before the surgery, uh, I I was a less able to walk and I was experiencing pain. So to me, obviously, the damage was starting to manifest itself. Uh, as I said, the surgery went fine, but uh, during the whole process, I had a reaction to anesthesia, a re, and that reaction to a muscle relaxant. And I was hallucinating like you wouldn't believe. And my hallucination stories would make for interesting uh reading. In addition, my oxygen level dropped. Uh, I had low sodium. Now, have you ever heard of low sodium? That is new to me. So I was on a a water restriction diet and I was taking sodium tal- tablets. And that did a number on my my whole system. Uh, also, I was extremely weak. And to indicate how weak I was and how slow this process was, uh, the first day I was in therapy, I couldn't even stand. Five weeks later, with a walker, I was able to walk eighty feet. So my recovery process isn't totally guaranteed, but it's guaranteed, but it's guaranteed to be slow. So I have another four to eight weeks of in-house therapy, which may be extended. Uh, so I'm gonna be out of commission as far as being active for a while, walking around. Uh, I'm hoping that uh with with the walker and the therapy, I'll be able to go outside more more than I have. I I got a wheelchair, but I don't wanna use the wheelchair because it's, I think it's more trouble than it's worth at this stage, getting getting in and out of it. But I'm extremely happy to be home. Uh, that's the big thing and that's helping me with my therapy, so just an update.
Wow, thank you, Bob, for that. Roger.
Yeah.
Being home is helpful.
Good to be home.
So.
All the doctors and nurses rave about the stitches and uh, I think they use glue, it's some sort of medical glue and it's a perfectly straight line. I mean, you never know it's there.
Prayers to you, Bob, for.
Yeah.
A continued recovery.
So uh, I have something, I um about, a couple of weeks ago, uh, I ran into Ryan Rudin's mother, Market Basket. And she said, you're on the library person, part of trustees, actually. I said, yes. And she said, could you make sure, could you do me a favor? She said, my family would really like a list and maybe photographs of the things that were done with the money.
Okay.
So uh, it it may be, I don't know if in in her capacity is is Secretary of Caitlin would 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 do the communication, but the mother would really like some communication from us about about what we, what happened, what happened.
Committee never really showed them.
And like, I told her, well, we got furniture.
Yeah.
And other things. And she, so she said, well, good, I'd like to, I'd like to know that specifically and then if pictures would be great, but she 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 was, she was very sweet. And I.
My town was so.
No, I know she wants, she wants an actual physical.
Show people.
Yeah, she, it's kinda like she wants to thank you is what she's asking for, I think, so. But she was so sweet and um Ryan was one of Irene's students, so Irene was like all cut off. It was, it was, it was, so that's what she asked for, so I thought that's that all.
And you have that list of, you know, what was purchased through that?
I need to get a statement from the entirety of the spending, but I will be able to.
Maybe you do.
Okay, that's on the list.
That's on the list.
Thank you.
All right.
Even if you work backwards, the stuff that we just did. And then you sink and everything.
Yes, the sink is one. And.
I think some furn- some furniture was bought.
Yeah, there was furniture. There were some.
Signage.
Signage, yes, the sign was part of it.
Yeah. So.
If you need help with it, let me know.
Okay.
All right, Nancy, did you have anything?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I have anything.
No. Laurel?
I said enough.
Lindsay, did you have anything to add? For tru- for trustee comments?
Nope, I'm good.
And Jay, Jay still there?
I'm still.
All right, did you have anything you wanted to add, Jay?
No, I'm good.
All right. And Bob, did you have anything? You all sat?
I'm all set, thank you.
Then it looks like you could.
I moved the adjourn.
Yeah.
I second.
All right. Nancy?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Let me.
All right.
Okay, so.
Thanks. Oh, yeah, let me.